The Board will now come to order. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Tyus, Alderwoman Flowers, Alderman Bosley, Alderman Moore, Alderwoman Hubbard, Alderwoman Ingracia, Alderman Koltar, Alderman Conway, Alderman Ortman, Alderman Valmer, Alderman Villa, Alderman Arnowitz, Alderwoman Murphy, Alderwoman Howard, Alderwoman Green, Alderwoman Behringer, Alderman Rhodey, Alderman Kennedy, Alderwoman Davis, Alderwoman Spencer, Alderman French, Alderman Boyd, Alderman Vaccaro, Alderman Ogilvy, Alderman Cohn, Alderman Williamson, Alderman Carter, Alderwoman Cruzen, President Reed, Alderwoman Tyus, Alderwoman Flowers, Alderwoman Hubbard, Alderwoman Ingracia, Alderman Conway, Alderman Ortman, Alderwoman Murphy, Alderwoman Green, Alderwoman Behringer, Alderman Rhodey, Alderman Kennedy, Alderwoman Davis, Alderman Cohn, Alderman Williamson. Seventeen present.
A quorum being present, we are truly blessed today to have with us Bishop Lawrence Wooton from Williams Temple Church of God in Christ. Bishop Wooton is one of the top members or actually office holders for the Church of God in Christ, and there are six and a half members all across the, not just the United States, but all around the world. So, we are so blessed today to have Bishop Wooton lead us in prayer.
May we stand and bow our heads. Father God, before we ask you for anything, we want to thank you for everything. We want to thank you for this gift because we didn't have to have this day, but you gave us this day, one that we have never seen before. We thank you for health and strength. We thank you for our families. We thank you for our friends. We even thank you for our enemies because they become our stepping stone. Even now, Lord, we ask your blessing, your favor upon this board. We pray for our mayor Francis Slay. We pray for the president Louis Reed. Every alder woman and alder man, our great city. Bless our city to have a spiritual turnaround. Loosen your favor upon this city. Lord, we come against the violence in our city. Your word declare whatsoever we bind on earth, you'll bind it in heaven. And we bind the violence that has gone forth. And even now, Lord, we pray for the family that lost those little babies this week. Oh, God, give them comfort and give them strength, even as we remember them in our prayers. And even, Lord, we thank you for being a God that hears and answers prayer. You said, except the Lord watch over the city, the watchman watch in vain. We ask you to lead and guide each and every alder woman, alder man, every worker in this great city, because without you, we can do nothing. And we ask your continual blessing upon each and every one, we pray, in that matchless name of Jesus Christ our Lord. And everyone said, amen.
One thing I forgot to notify everybody. You know, the Holy Convocation comes to the city of St. Louis for how many years in a row now? Sam, three, five years, five years in a row? Well, we can thank Bishop Wooton for making that happen because that puts millions of dollars in our economy every year when it comes. So, let's, thirty to forty million dollars when it comes to the city of St. Louis. So, let's give him a round of applause and thank you for what he continues to do for the city. Introduction, round of guests, any introduction, round of guests? Alderman from the seventh?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. Our special guests, John Nation and Ray Freeman from Bi-State Development Agency.
Alderman from the ninth?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I'd like to have for my honored guest today, Martina Johnson from the St. Louis Association of Realtors.
Alderman from twenty-second?
Good morning, Mr. President, members of the board. I'd like to have three esteemed guests. We have Rachel Smith and Jane Dorst with the Circuit Attorney's Office, and the infamous Chris Pickle with AT&amp;T.
Alderman from the twentieth?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I'd like to have as my special guest today Chad Sabora from the Missouri Network for Opiate Reform and Recovery.
Any further introductions, any further introductions? Alderman from the twelfth?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I'd like to introduce everyone else to my left as my special guest today. They're very loyal people who show up every week. Thank you.
Alderwoman from the nineteenth?
Mr. President, members of the board, I also wanted to acknowledge the entire Church of God in Christ congregation as my guests and partners in relieving some of the problems we have on the streets of the city of St. Louis. I spent this past weekend with two of the churches, most especially Faith Temple. They're coming outside the walls, and their men are working on the streets trying to improve our outcomes. So, I wanted to thank them.
All right, thank you. Alderman from the fourth? Alderwoman from the fourteenth?
Thank you, Alderman from the fourth. Good morning, Mr. President and esteemed colleagues. I would like to have as my very special guest Anthony Lancia of AGC, David Sweeney, Megan Shackelford, firefighters local seventy-three president, Demetrius Alfred, and Laborers International local one-ten representative Clinton McBride. I think I've got everybody in the room. Thank you.
Alderman from the fourth?
Thank you, Mr. President, and members of the board. I'd like to have as my special guest today Bishop Wooton from the Church of God in Christ who prayed that prayer, JP from the mayor's office, and my very special guest is Deion Flowers.
We also have with us John Dieters and Gary Woodcock. Could you guys stand? Let's give them a round of applause. These guys have been doing some great things in business all across the city of St. Louis and making sure that our economy keeps going. So, we appreciate all the work that you guys do. Any further introductions, any further introductions? Alderman from tenth, like to wrap us up?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. We're here on May twenty-sixth, which is Red Nose Day. I will ask that the Alderman from the twenty-third, please take his nose off during the meeting. But more importantly, in nineteen-seventy-one on this day, Don McLean recorded the song "American Pie", and in nineteen-seventy-seven, the movie "Star Wars" was released, and we're happy to have with us the actor who played Chewbacca, Mr. Dave Sweeney.
Alderman from the eighteenth, you recognize on approval of the minutes?
Mr. President, members of the board, I move that the minutes of the May thirteenth meeting be approved.
Been approved by, moved by Alderman from the eighteenth. Entertainer, second on that motion. Seconded by Alderman from the nineteenth, any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Pose, motion carries. Report of city officials.
Report of city officials can be found in sections A, B, and C of the agenda and have been placed in all Alderman's mailboxes. I have from as honor the mayor, the following correspondents. Dear members of the board, I have the pleasure to submit the following individual for appointment to the six-twenty Market Transportation Development District and the six-twenty Market Community Improvement District. The appointment of Mr. Thomas M. Mike Shannon, who resides in the Seventh Ward, whose term will expire on June the thirtieth, two thousand and nineteen. I respectfully request your approval of this appointment. Sincerely, Francis G. Slay, Mayor of City of St. Louis.
Alderman from the seventh, you recognize on the mayor's appointment to the six-twenty Market Transportation Development District and the six-twenty Market Community Improvement District.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I move to confirm the mayor's appointment.
It's been moved by Alderman from the seventh. Entertain a second on that motion. Seconded by Alderman from the nineteenth, any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Pose, motion carries.
That's the extent of report of city officials.
We have dispensed with line item seven. Would anyone like to take any bills off of any of our informal calendars? Would anyone like to take any bills off of any of our formal calendars?
Mr. President, members of the board, I move for perfection of Board Bill nine.
It's been moved by Alderman from the third, perfection of Board Bill nine, seconded by Alderman from the ninth, any discussion? It's been moved and seconded that we perfect Board Bill nine. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Pose, motion carries.
That's the extent of Board Bill's for perfection informal calendar.
We have dispensed with line items nine and ten. Alderman from the twenty-eighth, you recognize?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I move to first read, introduce from the floor, Board Bill number sixty-eight.
Been moved by Alderman from the twenty-eighth. Seconded by Alderman from the tenth, any discussion? Is, and I'm assuming it's on everyone's desk?
It is on everyone's desk, and we just didn't get it here quite in time for our Thursday meeting this week.
All right, it's been moved by Alderman from, Alderman from the first?
Point of information, I don't see it on my desk.
That's it?
It's been moved by Alderman from the twenty-eighth, seconded by Alderman from the tenth that we spend our rules for the purposes of introducing the aforementioned Board Bill. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Tyus, Alderwoman Flowers, Alderman Bosley, Alderman Moore, Alderwoman Hubbard, Alderwoman Ingracia, Alderman Koltar, Alderman Conway, Alderman Ortman, Alderman Valmer, Alderman Villa, Alderman Arnowitz, Alderwoman Murphy, Alderwoman Howard, Alderwoman Green, Alderwoman Behringer, Alderman Rhodey, Alderman Kennedy, Alderwoman Davis, Alderwoman Spencer, Alderman French, Alderman Boyd, Alderman Vaccaro, Alderman Ogilvy, Alderman Cohn, Alderman Williamson, Alderman Carter, Alderwoman Cruzen, President Reed, Alderwoman Hubbard, Alderwoman Ingracia, Alderman Conway, Alderwoman Murphy, Alderwoman Green, Alderwoman Behringer, Alderman Rhodey, Alderman Cohn, Alderman Williamson. Twenty, aye vote.
By your vote, you stay in the motion, Alderman from the twenty-eighth, and suspended the rules for purposes of introducing Board Bill number sixty-eight. Madam Clerk, please place Board Bill number sixty-eight on the first reading calendar.
So noted.
First reading of Board Bills.
Board Bill sixty-eight sponsored by Alderwoman Lyda Cruzen and Alderman Frank Williamson. And ordinance approving a petition for the creation of the East Loop Community Improvement District, authorizing the district to impose special assessments, finding a public purpose, and containing a severability clause. That's the extent of our first read.
Madam Clerk, please assign Board Bill number sixty-eight to Ways and Means.
So noted.
Reference to committee?
To the Ways and Means Committee, Board Bill sixty-eight. That's the extent of reference to committee.
Second reading.
Following Board Bill was reported out of the Public Employees Committee, Board Bill sixty-five sponsored by Alderman Williamson and Alderman Arnowitz, an ordinance to regulate employer and employee working relationships between the city and all employees under the classified service, repealing ordinance six-nine-nine-four-nine allocating certain other employees to agree with the rate specifically superseding any and all provisions of the Police Manual and/or special orders of the Police Division and containing an emergency clause. The following bill was reported out of the Public Safety Committee, Board Bill forty sponsored by Aldermen and Alderwomen Spencer Cruzen, Vaccaro, Ogilvy, Howard, Carter, Green, Williamson, Ortman, and Cohn, and ordinance pertaining to drug-related overdoses and medical assistance, immunity from prosecution for possession or control, and containing definitions and an emergency clause. The following Board Bills were reported out of the Housing Committee, Board Bill thirty-five Committee Substitute sponsored by Alderwoman Hubbard and Alderwoman Davis, and ordinance approving the redevelopment plan for sixteen-hundred through seventeen-fourty-two Washington Avenue. Board Bill forty-five sponsored by Alderwoman Davis and Alderman Bosley, and it's amending ordinance six-nine-four-five-oh by modifying the terms of real estate tax abatement for the Shepherd Apartments redevelopment area. Board Bill number eleven sponsored by Alderman Koltar, and ordinance recommended by the planning commission to change the zoning of property as indicated on the district map for multiple city blocks from B to two-family dwelling district, D, multiple-family dwelling district, J, industrial district, and K, unrestricted district, to the I, central business district, and containing an emergency clause. The following Board Bills were reported out of the Ways and Means Committee, Board Bill thirty-two sponsored by Alderwoman Davis, and ordinance approving the petition of owners of certain real property to establish a community improvement district establishing the Grand Center Area Two Community Improvement District and containing a severability clause. Board Bill fifty-one as amended sponsored by Alderman Rhodey, and ordinance approving, approving the petition to establish the forty-one-oh-one Le Cleed Community Improvement District. That's the extent of our second readings.
Dispense with line item fourteen, perfection consent.
Board Bill four, number four sponsored by Alderman Rhodey, and ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for forty-four-oh-three Gibson. Board Bill number ten sponsored by Alderman Bosley, and ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for fifteen-hundred through oh-four Salisbury. Board Bill twelve sponsored by Alderwoman Ingracia, and ordinance approving redevelopment plan for twenty-three-twenty-four Virginia. Board Bill thirteen sponsored by Alderman Conway, and ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for forty-thirty Russell. Board Bill fourteen sponsored by Alderman Conway, and ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for forty-one-oh-four through forty-one-sixty-four Detonti. Board Bill fifteen sponsored by Alderman Ortman, and ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for thirty-three-thirty-two through thirty-three-thirty-four Missouri and thirty-three-ten, Limp. There are Board Bill sixteen sponsored by Alderwoman Green, and ordinance approving a blight study and a redevelopment plan for thirty-three-five Connecticut Street and containing a severability clause. Board Bill seventeen sponsored by Alderwoman Green, and ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for thirty-six-fifty-seven Wyoming Street and containing a severability clause. Board Bill nineteen sponsored by Alderman Ortman, and ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for twenty-eight-forty-one McNair. Board Bill twenty sponsored by Alderman Ortman, and ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for thirty-four-twenty-nine Missouri. Board Bill twenty-two sponsored by Alderman Ortman, and ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for nineteen-eleven Utah Street area. Board Bill twenty-four sponsored by Alderman Ortman, and ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for twenty-eight-forty-two Ohio area, Ohio Avenue area. Board Bill thirty-nine sponsored by Alderwoman Ingracia and Alder Koltar, and ordinance approving an amended blighting study and a redevelopment plan for amended Tower Grove East Fox Park scattered sites redevelopment area and containing a severability clause. Board Bill thirty-one sponsored by Alderman Williamson, and ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for fifty-eight-fifty-nine D. Giverville. Board Bill thirty-seven sponsored by Alderman Koltar, and ordinance approving redevelopment plan for twenty-two-forty-six Shenandoah. Board Bill thirty-eight sponsored by Alderman Koltar, and ordinance approving redevelopment plan for twenty-two-forty-three McNair. Board Bill forty-three sponsored by Alderman Rhodey, and ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for forty-two-twenty-seven Swan. Board Bill forty-four sponsored by Alderwoman Green, and ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for thirty-seven-twenty-two Theloson. Board Bill fifty-six sponsored by Alderman Koltar, and ordinance approving a blighting study and redevelopment plan for twenty-one-oh-five Ann and containing a severability clause. Board Bill twenty-five sponsored by Alderman Rhodey, and ordinance amending ordinance, ordinance numbers seven-zero-one-five-nine, several, seven-zero-one-six-oh, and seven-zero-one-seven-five relating to the thirty-two North Euclid Tiff redevelopment project. That's the extent of perfection consent.
Alderman from the eighteenth, you recognize on the motion for the perfection consent calendar?
Mr. President, members of the board, I move for adoption of the perfection consent calendar.
Moved by Alderman from the eighteenth, seconded by Alderman from the twenty-fifth, any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Pose, motion carries. Alderman from the twenty-third, you?
For third reading, pertaining to Bi-State, on behalf of Alderman Conway, I'd like to move Board Bill forty-six, forty-seven, forty-eight, and forty-nine to the informal calendar.
Madam Clerk, please make note of that. Forty-six through forty-nine from the third reading calendar to the informal calendar.
So noted.
All right, we have dispensed with line item sixteen. Third reading consent.
Board Bills forty-two, fifty Committee Substitute, eighteen, and fifty-two.
Alderman from the eighteenth, you recognize on the motion for the third reading consent calendar?
Mr. President, members of the board, I move for adoption of third reading consent calendar.
Moved by Alderman from the eighteenth, seconded by Alderman from the twenty-fifth. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Tyus, Alderwoman Flowers, Alderman Bosley, Alderman Moore, Alderwoman Hubbard, Alderwoman Ingracia, Alderman Koltar, Alderman Conway, Alderman Ortman, Alderman Valmer, Alderman Villa, Alderman Arnowitz, Alderwoman Murphy, Alderwoman Howard, Alderwoman Green, Alderwoman Behringer, Alderman Rhodey, Alderman Kennedy, Alderwoman Davis, Alderwoman Spencer, Alderman French, Alderman Boyd, Alderman Vaccaro, Alderman Ogilvy, Alderman Cohn, Alderman Williamson, Alderman Carter, Alderwoman Cruzen, President Reed, Alderwoman Hubbard, Alderwoman Ingracia, Alderman Conway, Alderman Arnowitz, Alderwoman Murphy, Alderwoman Green, Alderwoman Behringer, Alderman Rhodey, Alderman Williamson. Twenty-one, aye vote.
By your vote, you stay in the motion at Alderman from the eighteenth and third read, and finally pass the aforementioned bills.
That's the extent of third reading consent.
Third reading, report of engrossments.
We have none.
Report of enrollment.
Board Bills forty-two, fifty Committee Substitute, eighteen, and fifty-two.
All other business being suspended, the president shall an open session. I fix a signature here too, to the end that these may become law. Alderwoman from the nineteenth, you recognize on the courtesy resolution calendar? Motion for courtesy resolution.
President Reed and members of the board, I make a motion to approve the courtesy resolution calendar.
Moved by Alderman from the nineteenth, entang seconded by Alderman from the eighteenth. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Pose, motion carries. First reading of resolutions.
Resolution thirty-four sponsored by Alderman Ortman. The Parks and Environmental Matters Committee pursuant to ordinance six-four-nine-nine-four does hereby approve the recommendation of the Director for the appropriation of Neighborhood Parks Capital Improvements Account Funds for fiscal year two thousand and seventeen.
Alderman from the ninth, you recognize on the first reading of resolution number thirty-four?
Thank you, Mr. President. I request that resolution thirty-four be referred to the Parks Committee.
It's been moved by Alderman from the ninth, seconded by Alderman from the twenty-fifth, that resolution number thirty-four be assigned to Parks Commission. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Pose, motion carries. Madam Clerk, please assign resolution thirty-four to Parks.
So noted. Resolution thirty-five sponsored by Alderman Ortman. The Parks and Environmental Matters Committee pursuant to ordinance six-nine-three-seven-two does hereby approve the recommendations of the Director for the appropriation of Neighborhood Parks Capital Improvements Account Funds for fiscal year two thousand and seventeen.
Alderman from the ninth, you recognize on the first reading of resolution number thirty-five?
Thank you, Mr. President. I request that resolution thirty-five be referred to the Parks Committee also.
It's been moved by Alderman from the ninth, seconded by Alderman from the twenty-fifth, that we assign resolution number thirty-five to Parks. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Pose, motion carries.
Resolution number thirty-six sponsored by Alderman Ortman. The Parks and Environmental Matters Committee pursuant to ordinance six-seven-four-seven-seven does hereby approve the recommendations of the Director for appropriation of the Neighborhood Parks Capital Improvement Account Funds for fiscal year two thousand and seventeen.
Alderman from the ninth, you recognize on the first reading of resolution number thirty-six?
Thank you, Mr. President, and I should say ditto except for resolution thirty-six. Refer to Parks Committee, please.
All right, it's been moved by Alderman from the ninth, seconded by Alderman from the twenty-fifth. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Pose, motion carries. Madam Clerk, please assign resolution thirty-six to Parks.
So noted. That's the extent of first reading of resolutions.
We also want to ask everybody to stand and join me in a moment of silence for Terrence's mother who passed away. I was just notified about that. And Terrence has been our sergeant-at-arms for a lot of years, and he's always been there and been helpful to all of us. So, let's pray for him and his family. Dispense with line item twenty-two miscellaneous unfinished business.
We have none.
Announcements.
There's a Personnel Committee meeting immediately following the full board meeting today. This meeting will be closed to the public under the provision of section six-one-zero-point-zero-two-one of the Missouri Revised Statute in order to permit the members of the committee to discuss personnel, to discuss personnel matters. Wednesday, Ways and Means Committee meeting at eight-thirty a.m. in the leisure room. Also on Wednesday, Streets meeting at eleven o'clock in the Kennedy Room. On Friday, June the third, full board meeting, ten a.m. in the chambers. That's the extent of my announcements.
Any further announcements, any further announcements? Alderman from the eighteenth, you recognize on the motion to excuse?
Mr. President, members of the board, I move that the Alderman from the fifth, sixth, eighth, thirteenth, fifteenth, sixteenth, seventeenth, and twenty-sixth be excused for necessary actions.
It's been moved by Alderman from the eighteenth. Entertain a second on that motion. Seconded by Alderman from the eleventh, any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Pose, motion carries. Alderman from the, Alderman from the eighteenth, you recognize on the motion to adjourn?
Mr. President, members of the board, I move that the board adjourns until Friday, June third. June third, ten a.m.
Moved by Alderman from the eighteenth, seconded by Alderman from the twenty-fifth, any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Pose, stand adjourned.